So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the Member Ninth 2021 Meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. This time, I'd like to ask Pastor Ben Holland from the Dunkirk Baptist Church if he could give us an invocation, please.
Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the chance we have to come and participate in the business of Calvert County and to award, recognize, support those who have contributed so well to the success of this county. Lord, we come and pray for your wisdom and guidance for decisions and direction for those who are leading our county. Lord, we pray that you continue to provide and bless this nation and this county. Lord, as we get into this time of Thanksgiving, Lord, I pray that our hearts are lifted up to you to thank you for the bounty that you have given to us and to ask for your blessings for the time to come. Lord, as we also look forward to Veterans Day, Lord, we thank you for our veterans, for those who have served so valiantly in serving this country. And, Lord, we extend that appreciation to those who have served in the police force, for first responders, for those who have served in the medical professions during this coronavirus time. But, Lord, we pray that you continue to lead, to guide, to give wisdom, to bring peace, and to bring prosperity. And, Lord, as we are blessed, may we return those blessings and those Thanksgivings back to you. Lord, be here in this time. We pray for your presence and your spirit to guide, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pray the blessings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Pastor Holland. We appreciate you coming and being with us today. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
None.
Hearing none? The chair would entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion of a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, I have a couple of public service announcements. United Way is starting their fundraising campaign. We ask that you all consider giving because of the great work that United Way does in our community, helping with all the various charities and helping our citizens. So, if you have an opportunity, please give to the United Way. The other public service announcement is this coming Thursday is Veterans Day. We ask that you all take a moment on Thursday, especially, to think about our veterans. You know, we all live in a great free country because of the service of our veterans. So, we want to take some time to think about those individuals and the sacrifices that they made. So, we'll have a ceremony here in front of the courthouse at 10:30 on Thursday. So, invite anybody that would want to come to please come and join us as we pay our respects. So, having said that, the next item on the agenda is from Calvert County Health Department, Dr. Polsky.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Make sure my clicker is working. There we go. So, welcome to the biannual Board of Health presentation. I know that we're not formally meeting as the Board of Health this morning, but it will serve that same function. So, I want to start out before we jump to COVID. I just wanted to bring up two things because, as a community, we should all be aware of public health in general and how things affect. I did mention back in the spring that the Maryland Department of Environment let us know that the Calvert County Health Department was the only health department in the entire state that was able to process all of the septic permits during the 2020 year when a lot of counties were dramatically affected by the pandemic. They just released about two weeks ago the actual numbers. So, I just wanted to let you all know that it's not just because we have a lower number of septic permits in Calvert. Actually, the opposite is the case. We have the second highest number of septic permits each year in Calvert County compared to the other 23 counties out there. So, you can see on the chart, or for those at home, it may be a little bit difficult to read, but our staff processed 135 more permits than any other county in the state. The closest was Baltimore County, which has a population about nine times higher than ours. And so, timely processing these permits not only protects the public health, no one wants raw sewage bubbling up in their backyard or coming downstream from their neighbor's backyard, but this is also critical for the economy of the county, that both homeowners and business owners can move on with repairs and with new construction. All right, clicker. And, just quickly, along the same lines that for reproductive health department did yeoman's work last year, these numbers just got released a couple of weeks ago as well, that our county did better in terms of maintaining services to our public than any other county in the state. Really hard work on the part of our staff to adopt to all the changes that had to happen with COVID. We essentially had no loss in services, actually a slight increase in number of services provided. Reproductive health does some really critical things. We deal predominantly with a high-risk population. These are women, families, who are much more at risk for pregnancy complications and preterm births. So, being able to do preconception counseling is critical to keep those numbers lower. And, year in and year out, our county has one of the lowest preterm birth and pregnancy complication rates in the state. Along the same lines, fewer unintended pregnancies. We have one of the lowest rates of teen pregnancies in the state. Our staff really works hard to make sure that we're reducing the number of sexually transmitted infections. And, again, we have one of the lowest rates in the state along those lines. And, over the last several years, our state, our staff has gone out of their way that when people are coming in for these kinds of services, they also screen everyone for mental health and substance use issues. And so, this is one of those referral bases to make sure that people who otherwise would not be identified, would not get services, are able, we immediately link them with our behavioral health team so that they can get services that they need. And, especially when you look at this population that are predominantly young parents, these kinds of services are critically important. One of those days that I was stuck on top of the bridge. My clicker is variably working today. There we go. So, COVID counts, my slides seem to go in a week early to let everyone at home know. We did have a further reduction last week, which was nice to see, although we've seen before where cases can drop one week and then go back up the next. We are still, even with the reduction this previous week, we're still in the high transmission range. And, you can see, if you look back to November and December of last year, that's when we started a very dramatic increase over the winter. So, I would just, hopefully, we'll see a further reduction over this next week or two, but we're heading into Thanksgiving, and I just want to make sure everyone is aware to continue to act in ways that are going to minimize the spread of virus, particularly COVID, but other viruses as well. We are heading into flu season. And then, so again, these numbers are a week old. Our positivity rate hovered around 5% last week. And then, you can see age ranges, and I'm going to flip one more. And, you can see, and again, this was the week prior, but you can see in the adult range, very high positivity rates, and those do correspond with the uptake of vaccinations. So, in age ranges where we have the lowest number of, or lowest percentage of vaccinated people, we have the highest percent positivity as far as COVID testing. So, just one more time to encourage people to get their vaccines. Statewide, this past week, the numbers really didn't change very much, less than 5% change from the numbers that are on the screen. So, we're still seeing about 80 to 100 deaths per week across the state related to COVID. 150 people in ICUs and about triple to quadruple of that of hospitalizations in non-ICU wards. And, you can see the number of ER visits. So, the next time that you're sitting there in the ER, waiting and waiting and waiting, people with COVID are in part delaying care for heart attacks, strokes, and everything else that needs to be dealt with in emergency rooms.
How often does that occur in Calvert?
How often does what occur?
You said, you just said, when you're waiting and waiting and waiting in the emergency room with a heart attack or something like that, people with COVID are clogging up the ER or something along those lines?
I can't give you an exact percentage, but I will say that it doesn't matter what the percentages are, even if it's 2% of the time. If you or your family member is the one with a heart attack and they're delayed in their care, that's 1% or 2% more than we should have to see.
Has that happened in Calvert yet?
I'm sure it happens. Emergency rooms, regardless of where they are, don't work at a steady-state pace.
Understood.
And, there are times where there are more patients than ER staff can reasonably handle. So, I can with certainty say, yes, it has happened, but I can't give you a specific number of times.
Okay.
And then, getting back to vaccinations, so, at this point, we still have 36,000 and change people who are unvaccinated at this point. The bright side, and we've talked about this a number of times, and we've hovered in the top three out of the 24 counties in terms of vaccination rates for seniors. As of last week, when I put the slide together, we were ranked number one in terms of best percentage there. But, you can see, in the adults between 18 and 64, we're middle of the pack. For our adolescent population, a little bit better than that, eighth best, but still certainly not nearly the vaccination rate that in Montgomery County, in Howard County, Anarondle, and other counties. And then, today, if I wasn't joining you, I would be down at the Tuxson Appeal Campus because today we are starting to vaccinate five to 11-year-olds. And, I certainly hope that parents take advantage of that. Currently, we have about 1,250, 1,300 students whose parents have consented for vaccination in the schools this week, and I expect that number will continue to ratchet up. So, I'll talk about that just a little bit more in a moment.
Is today the first day for that?
Today's the first day. Might as well just talk about it now.
And they send a notice home for parents to sign consent?
Correct. So, late last week and into the weekend, I think that almost every school, two notices went out, one from central administration and one from the individual schools. We decided, and we had discussions with the medical practices around the county, that the most effective way to get vaccinations to as many children as possible in the most expedient amount of time was to do them in the schools. If we do vaccinate about 1,500 children this week, there's no way that private medical practices could vaccinate that number of children in that period of time. And, I'll say that the relationships that our health department is fortunate enough to have with our local providers, that there were some doses of vaccine that were allocated to private practices that were sent to us so that we could use them more efficiently and with one of our local pharmacies as well. And so, my expectation is that after this week, doses that we do get in, we will then push them back out the other direction so that as private practices have more capacity to vaccinate, that we will return the favor and help them as well. The critical thing about this week is that two weeks beyond is Thanksgiving. So, children who get vaccinated this week, by the time they get together with family, they will already have about 70, maybe 75% immunity against COVID. So, not only does that protect them, but it protects their grandparents. And, we have to remember that the zero to four-year-olds are not eligible yet. And so, for younger siblings who have asthma, or if there are infants in the household, they're still vulnerable. And so, infections that their older siblings pick up, if they bring those back into the house, it affects generations or affects families in both age directions.
Are there any children currently in the hospital with COVID?
So, I did not recheck today, but I know that at least over the weekend, we did have one Calvert resident who is up at Children's for COVID-related illness. The illness was severe enough that they could not properly care for the child here locally, had the child need to be transferred. And then, so, just turning, oh, back to the vaccines. And, so, this is for boosters, and this is broken down by age range. This, again, was as of a week ago. As of yesterday, we were up to 10,000, 10,267. And, we were kind of neck and neck with Howard County in terms of the largest number per capita of booster doses. So, these are critically important because we know, especially for people who got vaccinated in the winter of last year, January, February, March, that their immunity is starting to wane. And that's a population that was primarily seniors. So, the more people who get boosted, the better immunity going into the winter. And, I don't think any coincidence, we did have, unfortunately, an increase in deaths in late September, the first week of October. It was just as we were starting to really get involved with boosters. Over the last month, we have not had any deaths in the county. And so, you know, this is always a probability game, but I think the 10,000 people who have gotten boosted, majority of which are seniors, that is playing a huge role over the last month in minimizing hospitalizations and preventing fatalities.
So, if somebody wants a booster, where can they go?
They can register through our health department. This week, we paused because every available nurse vaccinator is out in the schools. But, otherwise, we are still providing vaccines five days a week. Most medical practices are also making the vaccines available. So, at this point, I would say that people can contact their personal doctor or nurse practitioner and see if they can get them there and also at pharmacies. So, there's no shortage of availability at this point. At the health department, we're making available Pfizer, Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson. I don't want to get in the middle again, but I think that's something that deserves a discussion between an individual and their primary care provider as to how they recommend boosting if somebody got Johnson &amp; Johnson as their initial vaccination.
Hey, doc, how long, so, say in boosters, so, somebody's had their second shot, what's the estimated immunity time? Because you said, like, the kids are 70% of that. Is there, I know it's all new, but what are they estimating this time?
So, and 70% is with one dose. So, it is recommended for children. They also get a second vaccination, just like for adolescents and for adults. And, with the second shot, then, what the studies are showing is that immunity is up to 91% preventing for any kind of symptomatic illness, likely close to 100% protection against severe illness, meaning hospitalizations. So, that, again, the 70% was just with the first dose.
For how long though?
With children, it's not clear yet. Children respond better to vaccines than even teenagers and adults. So, it's possible that the immunity may last longer. They may not need a boost until maybe a year out. But, we talked about this a little bit, it's been a little while ago, that it's not a surprise that six months to a year, a booster is needed. There are a lot of vaccines, polio vaccine, HPV vaccine, there are a number of vaccines that in the routine series, there's one or two given in a short period of time, and then there's a booster six to 12 months out. And, once that booster's given, then, in general, people have good immunity for years to come. They don't need to keep getting, you know, you don't go for a polio vaccine every year or for measles. So, that booster was expected. The timing for children is something that, again, we probably won't know for a few months.
The doctor in reference to the, I'm sorry, go ahead, but before we go off the screen, I do have a question.
Sure. I haven't, okay. So, again, we've already started to talk a little bit about vaccines for five to 11-year-olds. And, I think it is important because, to discuss this, because early on, there was this kind of conception that children aren't really impacted by COVID. It certainly is not the case, and especially with the Delta variant. I did a Facebook Live with Dr. Chu and Dr. Metta last night, two of our local pediatricians, and they emphasized, once Delta appeared in late summer, how they were seeing more severe cases of COVID in their pediatric populations. So, at the moment, and this is just among five to 11-year-olds, there have been 8,300 hospitalizations across the U.S. The multi-system inflammatory syndrome, that's where inflammation can be triggered by viruses, in this case, COVID, that can impact the heart, lungs, kidneys, digestive tract, brain. The outcome over time for these children is going to be quite variable. You can imagine if a child's lungs get inflamed and scarred, what that may mean for them long-term and certainly for heart. And, that five to 11-year age range is the peak of seeing these multi-system inflammatory syndrome cases. So, particularly for these five to 11-year-olds, they are vulnerable to serious complications from COVID. The 714 deaths that have been seen, that's not just limited to five to 11-year-olds, but that spans and the age, if you depict one year where we've seen the most deaths, it's in infants. And, it's 130 of those 745 deaths have occurred in infants. So, again, getting back to when your five or six-year-old gets vaccinated, he or she, by not bringing the virus in, also provides protection to your younger children. And then, again, looking the other way, that we know that unfortunately, and obviously unintentionally, that children can and do spread infections to older relatives or household members. So, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gable, you had a question?
Yes, please. What is the amount of children? You say that COVID is the eighth-leading cause of death over the past year in this age group of five to 11. What is that actual number? Do you know?
So, for the year itself, so, the 745 deaths are over the 18 months roughly. And, as I said, it's been recent.
Right, 18 months of under 18 years old.
Yeah. So, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have a specific number. We could do a little bit of math, but it gets skewed because, again, with Delta, we've seen an increase more recently.
I think I found the website where you got that, and it's off the CDC website, and it actually lists the total deaths out of the 26 million children between five and 11, the total deaths from COVID.
Oh, it's 90, it's 91 or 98?
66.
Okay, I think it's a little bit, okay.
Okay.
All right.
And it's tied with suicides, the same number in the same age group, five to 11.
Yes.
And I just, eighth-leading cause of death, and all of them are terrible. I get it. Do you by any chance know how many children have died from the second vaccine, the second vaccine shot in the five to 11 group?
Zero.
Oh, I'll have to go back and look at the newspapers. I read other articles. Okay.
Okay. And, as Dr. Metta said last night, as we were having our discussion, any one death in this age range is one death too many. So, I would, again, impress upon parents that, you know, there are a lot of potential implications and ramifications of children getting infected regardless of the age range, and, again, encourage vaccination.
Doc, and I know Dr. Metta very, very well. Is there a way I can view, you said that was a live?
Right. So, if you go on our Facebook page, there should be a link there.
Curious to hear his thoughts. I've known him for 27 years.
And this is, this is his daughter, Monica.
I just recently met her. But, yeah, he was, and I don't want to misspeak, one of the few people in the county, like, 20 years ago, that could even give an IV to infants. I mean, he's, he's very well-respected.
Right. And I will say that we are fortunate, really across the board, to have really wonderful pediatricians and family practitioners in this county. So, you know, both Vargash and Monica, they do a tremendous job. And then, I know there's been concerns about myocarditis related to vaccination. Just two quick points. Number one, the age range we're looking at for five to 11-year-olds, this is not, these, this is not myocarditis from the vaccine. This is myocarditis from any cause, the vast majority of which are due to infections with viruses. At the lowest age, when you look at age range, it's the lowest incidence is among five to 11-year-olds. What we've seen in older age groups with the vaccine is that there is a bit of mirroring in age groups where you have higher baseline prevalences. That's where we see the myocarditis as a result of the vaccination. So, based on this data, although I can't give anything definitive, I will say that the potential for myocarditis in five to 11-year-olds as a result of the vaccine is going to be much, much lower than we see in especially 16 to 24-year-olds where you see the most there. And, evidence is very, very clear that myocarditis incidence is 10 to 20 times higher for people who get infected with the virus than the potential from the vaccine. And, the severity of myocarditis with the vaccine is very limited compared to the severity of myocarditis as a result of an actual virus infection. And then, other benefits, certainly, health is primary, but fully vaccinated children do not have to quarantine after they become a close contact with someone with COVID. And, at this point, about 5,300 middle schoolers and high schoolers in Calvert County have been vaccinated. We have not seen any significant complications from, for any of them due to the vaccination.
So, that's about a third of the population?
Well, we're seeing about 60, well, so, this is just the 12 to 17-year-olds. So, it's about 2/3 of the high schoolers and middle schoolers have been vaccinated at this point. And, that's reflected by, when you take a look at quarantines, that of all the high schoolers and middle schoolers, the week before, only 22 needed to quarantine. And, as the top line shows, that 99.6% of students were able to attend classes. So, I would, again, say that the school nurses, the teachers, they've been doing a wonderful job. We've not been, you know, in some places, when one child in a class ends up with COVID, they just shut a whole classroom down. There's been a lot of effort put into making sure that the only children who need to be excluded are those who truly are close contacts. And, our hope is that as we come out of these, this next month or so, and more elementary school students are fully vaccinated, that we'll see that number drop even further, both in terms of infections and in terms of the need to quarantine.
Were you able to get the coronavirus.maryland.gov website to get that information uploaded to them? We talked about it a couple of months ago, as far as the data on the state website showing.
I know that our staff has been in contact with them.
Gotcha.
So, hopefully that.
I just see that some schools in Calvert seem to report, but I guess not all. I don't know. Does that go through your office, or does that go from the school to the state?
We do contact the state directly. Whether the schools, in addition, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But, we do work with the state, and we talk with the state epidemiologists on a regular basis.
Okay. Because, again, like, as of last week, there's only 13 cases in Calvert in schools versus what you had listed up on the screen a moment ago. That was two at Barstow, 11 at Mill Creek.
So, again, these stats are now a week and a half old. We did have a further drop last week. I'm not sure the 13 is 100% accurate, but we did have a further reduction.
Okay, well, great. Thanks.
All right. And then, just to remind everyone out there, as we kind of shift, that Affordable Care Health Insurance Enrollment opened on November 1. In years gone by, it is closed on December 15 this year. It extends, I'm sorry, let me, I'll get that next, as far as the date. So, enrollment options are any U.S. citizen who resides in Maryland. If you reside in Virginia, you got to go to Virginia to enroll. And, that children and pregnant women often qualify for insurance at no cost, which also includes dental coverage, which I think if we take a look at one sector of healthcare where people if, if we take a look at one sector of healthcare where people are least able to afford care, it's with dental coverage. And for those who are not children and are not pregnant, there is supplemental dental coverage available for most people. And then, sorry, this...
Where would people go?
There we go.
Where would people go if they are enrolled into the ACA, they're paying their premiums, but yet Maryland bumps them out of the system for a couple of months and automatically renews them in order for them to be able, I guess, have the tax implication for not having, not having it throughout the entire year? Particular person I know has contacted, six attempts to try and get the coverage straight, showing the proof that the premiums have been paid.
That's a state...
And collected, but where does...
I think that's a state controller question, that's not a local health department.
I didn't know if there was somebody in the local, you're promoting it, so I didn't know if there was somebody in the local health department that they could go to to seek assistance on that.
We, we can show, we can show document, you know, we can show proof of, of insurance, but we certainly can't absolve people of their tax issues. So that would...
Well, no, it's, it's a tax issue because the Maryland State Health kicked them out of the system, just removed them from the system arbitrarily for a small period of time.
So they're, people are welcome...
There's hiccups in the system. Where, where do people go to get those...
People are welcome to call our health department, and we, we do have a few staff who, their, their job is to help people with enrollment, and they hopefully would be able to verify for people, give them some documentation.
Super, I'll send, I'll send them your way, thank you.
All right, not a problem. So I'm sorry, I started to mention about the coverage on the last slide. If people enroll by December 31st, their coverage starts on January 1st. For those who delay, they do have until January 15th to enroll, but their coverage would not start until February 1st. So certainly encourage people not to wait till the last minute. Many people qualify for some type of assistance to make insurance more affordable. So people should not assume arbitrarily that, that insurance would be not affordable for them. And certainly, we see what healthcare bills can do to families, still, to best my knowledge, the leading cause of bankruptcy in this country are healthcare bills. And there's both the website and a toll-free number that people can call. Just make quick mention, not so much the incredible medieval stained glass on the left side, but a shout-out to our county, state, our county attorney. On the right side is a steel from Sitsin Nalouv that shows Hammurabi getting the Code of Laws from the sun god back in ancient Babylon. And the bottom part are 282 laws, the first set of laws down. Commissioner Wiems and Commissioner Hart might be interested in, among those 282 laws, it's very much an eye for an eye, tooth for a tooth, back in, in ancient Babylon, that for wine merchants who were found watering down their wares, the punishment was drowning in the river. Because if you're going to water down your wine, they're going to water you down.
As they should be.
There you go.
It's true for liquor store owners today, too.
Nobody wants a watered-down drink.
Absolutely not. And then, kind of wrap up influenza, we can't forget about that, that there are years where hospitals will fill up just with flu patients. And there's also business implications. So as I've mentioned in previous years, it is in employer's best interests for their staff, their employees to be vaccinated, that on average, businesses lose $135 per day when staff are out because of the flu. And that doesn't take into account when people show up kind of foggy and not doing their jobs very well, and make mistakes that sometimes will end up driving supervisors and business owners to distraction. And side effects from the flu vaccine, extremely rare, so the, the bottom of the slide, your chances of dying from the flu is 50 to 100 times greater than your chances of having a bad reaction to the vaccine. So just remind everyone that we've been vaccinating people since back in the start of this nation, that vaccines have always been extremely safe, and even more so in modern times, and, and that people should not be dissuaded from things that sometimes they see on social media that have no basis in fact, that if you have concerns about the safety of vaccinations, please talk to your personal physician or nurse practitioner. And then I will finish up mentioning something that I know that Colonel McDowell was talking about earlier today, with substance use and, and mental health gets tied into this as well, that I'd mentioned previously, that our county has had the, the largest drop in overdose deaths of any county in Maryland over the last three years. We have just got data for the first nine months of this year, and we had an additional 16% drop in overdose deaths in the county. A little bit of perspective, so our neighbor to the north has a population about six times greater than Calvert, but they have 10 times the number of overdose deaths. So we still have work to do, but collectively, and there have been a lot of people across the county that have really pitched in meaningfully, collectively, we still have some work to do. And for people who do want to get vaccinated, whether it's a first vaccine or a booster, there is our website, you can log on and, and register, and phone number that you can call, or, as I mentioned before, you can call your personal doctor or nurse practitioner. Happy to take any additional questions.
To, to go back to the hospitalization in the ER that you were talking about earlier, how many people do you know are currently hospitalized in Calvert due to COVID, and how many are in the ICU currently?
As, as of yesterday, seven people were hospitalized due to COVID, one in the ICU.
Gotcha. Okay, so one person in the ICU, got it, and seven, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Polsky.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you all.
Have a good day.
Thanks, you too.
So next item on the agenda is proclamations, Commissioner McConkey.
Do we have anybody here from Huntingtown Golf Team? If you'd like to come up here, and we'll read this proclamation.
Actually, you can introduce yourselves if you'd like, they're at the microphone.
Microphone, stop and introduce yourself.
Your five minutes of fame for today.
Hello, testing?
Yep.
John McGuffin, head coach, Huntingtown, this is our team, they'll introduce their names, we'll go stand up front, we're honored to be here, and we'll thank you very much.
John, we, we, everybody knows you, we, we just want the kids to introduce themselves.
Yes, yes.
Just say who you are.
I'm McLean Barry.
What grade?
Sophomore.
All right.
Line up down there.
Jordan Richards, I'm senior on Huntingtown Golf Team.
He's lined up right over there.
Yep.
Sean Heppi, senior.
I'm Cameron Kepiskowski, I'm a junior.
Caden Boggs, and I'm a junior.
Blake Nichols, and I'm a junior.
Carter Boswell, and I'm a junior.
Yes, just line up in front, don't worry about us.
No one Rochelle, and I'm a freshman.
Hannah Bauer, I'm in 10th grade.
Big man.
Yes, Colonel, and I'm in, I'm a junior.
I'm a junior, that's right.
All righty. Come on up, John.
Coach Vaughn here, Coach Vaughn, this is Coach Joe Vaughn.
All right, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the youth of Calver County represent our most treasured resource, the accomplishments, achievements, and abilities of these young citizens deserve the recognition and praise of their elders. And whereas the Huntingtown High School golf team, under the leadership of Coach John McGuffin, demonstrated good sportsmanship at their match on September 30th, 2021, by cheering and supporting a teammate who sustained a traumatic brain injury. The team agreed that Garrett Crowner would play in the match in the starting lineup. He not only finished a few holes, but completed the entire match of nine holes, and was cheered at the final green by many members of the team and the community. Whereas elements of sportsmanship reflect crucial life skills that will help players thrive throughout their education. A strong sense of character and collaboration can also prepare, prepare them for the workplace. Sportsmanship can combat bullying and promote inclusion by providing a safe and healthy environment where players value respect, fairness, integrity, responsibility, and perseverance. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the appreciation of all Calver County citizens is hereby extended to the Huntingtown High School golf team. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County joins with the community in celebrating this kind of sportsmanship, given under our hands and seal this ninth day of November 2021.
Commissioner, while you got them there, just to piggyback on what you guys have said, you know, as a, as a sheriff of this county, it's, it's good to recognize outstanding citizens, and you guys are just outstanding for what you did. It's remarkable, you should be recognized, you should remember this day and the day you did this, and I think you're going to do good things in the future for Calver County. On a side note, if Huntingtown High had been built in '74, I'd have been there. But I present you all with the sheriff's, so I've got a little pen for you, well done, men.
Can I say a few words?
Can I say a few words?
Absolutely.
First of all, I think...
Yes, sir.
Just want to thank everybody.
No crying.
No, there's no crying in golf. Garrett suffered traumatic brain injury. We are very blessed people, and we're very thankful that Garrett got to play in a match and represent our high school. And our entire community, Calver County, should be extremely proud. We're thankful for our athletic director, Mr. Vasheen Gross, and our vice principal, Ms. Abby Gray, for being here. Our parents are very supportive. We try to educate these young people, that's why we're going to get them back to class. We're in and out quickly, we don't mess around, okay? And, and I'm very appreciative of the team, the team got together and we said, Nate, yeah, Garrett's going to play. And we put Garrett in the lineup, it might have been only three holes, four holes, he did all nine holes. And it's truly a blessing. Commissioners, this is an honor that we will really take serious and present to the school when we get back home. So thank you, commissioners, thank you, Calver County, and thank you to everybody that's here today. Blessings.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're out of here?
Yep. Thank you.
Back to the bus, back to school. Anybody want to join us, I'm teaching algebra. Thank you, guys. You guys shake hands with commissioners.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you. Good job, guys, thank you so much.
I do, I, we're sitting up here.
Rachel, where's the caregivers' proclamation?
It's right there.
Good stuff. Take care, guys, thank you very much.
Here's one, you can just read this.
But I, no, it was laying, it was laying right here.
Somebody had to grab it.
He didn't just leave with it, did he?
John, John might have just taken it. Catch John.
Got to catch John.
Because he had one in his hand.
Yeah.
Hey, Mark, I think John McGuffin took the proclamation.
No, John, John McGuffin grabbed it, he had to, because he had one in his hand.
So we just have a minor technical issue with the next proclamation, so we'll just move on to the other one, while we work that out, so Commissioner Wiems?
Yeah.
John had to grab it.
Yeah, it was laying right there.
There it is.
Go ahead, Stan. Yeah, go ahead.
Is that it, Rachel?
Yes. Did he have it by mistake? Yeah.
The golf team took the next proclamation with them.
He was so excited.
We're going to modify the agenda slightly, and if I could have representatives of hospice, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Whereas, for more than 40 years, hospice has helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people, allowing them to spend their final months surrounded by their loved ones. And whereas, the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. And whereas, beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. And whereas, palliative care delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain, which can be provided at any time during an illness, hospices are some of the best providers of community-based palliative care. And whereas, hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators for advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, that the month of November be known as Hospice and Palliative Care Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to increase their understanding and awareness of end-of-life care, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs, given under our hand and seal this ninth day of November 2021. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, ladies, for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So I just want to say, as they leave, you know, what hospice does to help families in their times of need and at the end of life is amazing, and takes such a burden off the family to have them in and help out with decisions and situations, so we greatly appreciate what these ladies do for all of us. The next proclamation, National Family Caregivers Month, Commissioner Hart.
Good morning, and do we have anybody here? If you could say your name and come on up, please.
Good morning, my name is Lisa Cottle, I'm the Long Term Care Manager at the Office on Aging, and I would just like to say a few words, I'm going to actually read, but November is the month that we take time out to recognize our caregivers. And we want to remember that they're not just caregivers, they're mothers, they're fathers, they're aunts, uncles, nieces, friends, and neighbors that take care of our seniors. And they all have unique passions and personalities, and we want to take time at the Office on Aging to recognize that, and to let them know that we are there to help them. We do provide some services for them, sometimes just a listening ear, to listen to their stories. And last Wednesday, we joined the efforts of St. Mary's in Charles County, and we provided some caregiving time to our caregivers. We had breakfast, a guest speaker, pampering sessions with massages and essential oils for each caregiver. The event was held in St. Mary's County, and we intend to rotate the counties to make this a regular fall event. So we had, we only had 18, but we were happy to get 18, and this time with the pandemic, that actually turned out to, came to an actual event. And we had five caregivers from our county. And soon we will have the opportunity... from our county. And soon, we will have the opportunity to post a video of the speaker on each of our county websites for those who weren't able to attend. So, our Office on Aging is here to support the caregiver and to help them not only take care of their loved ones, but to also take care of themselves. So, thank you.
Is there anybody else with you today?
Commissioners, we just want to thank you. Lisa covered everything. Thank you for your support of the Office on Aging and this important initiative to support the caregivers who support some of the most vulnerable people in our county. Thank you very much.
Well, before I get started, you know, so this year I will be 53, which some people say, yeah, has but is. But it is different because seeing folks that, you know, from your parents to your teachers getting older and not being able to do the things that, you know, when you're a kid, they're like superheroes, you know? They just seem like they can do everything. And to watch how time has made that more and more difficult, and you said it, for the caregivers to take care of themselves, too, because it is a big toll. It's hard emotionally when you say, wow, you know, this person could, you know, walk on water and run through buildings, and now watching them just daily routines is a struggle. And so, I am very thankful that we live in a county that we respect that and the pride and people help out. And I want to read this to you and everyone that participates and helps out. And it says, whereas, the National Family Caregivers Month is an annual national observance held in November, developed by the Caregiver Action Network to recognize the 90-plus million family caregivers in this country. And whereas, recognizing family caregivers as a devoted individual offering endless hours of care and support to loved ones in their homes and communities with the sole purpose of sustaining quality of life. And whereas, this year's theme, Caregiving Around the Clock, recognizes that family caregivers give selflessly, provide countless hours to provide care for older adults who are friends and loved ones. Whereas, the County, Calvert County Office on Aging continues to offer assistance and support through limited caregiver grants for monthly drop-in support, medical equipment, assistant technology devices, and links to community programs. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of November be known as National Family Caregivers Month in Calvert County, recognizing caregivers for their devotion, dedication, and support they provide to their families, members, and loved ones. And be it further proclaimed that the appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to all family caregivers for their efforts given under our hands and seal this ninth day of November 2021, signed by all five Commissioners.
And the last proclamation that we have today, Commissioner Gadway.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see, we have somebody here from the Legion. Anybody from the VFW, please come up. Stop and let us know who you are there, and then come on up.
My name is Patricia McCorm. I'm the past Department Commander for the American Legion for the State of Maryland.
Thank you for coming and joining us today.
And Ms. Pat, you are also a member.
Yes, ma'am.
You're also a member of our newly formed group, if you could. Yes, recognize that, please. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot here.
As you know, Calvert County, these gentlemen up here formed a Veterans Affairs Commission for Calvert County. I was appointed to be a part of that commission, and it's an honor for me to say that Calvert County, we were the last county in the state of Maryland to get a Veterans Commission. So, and I'm proud to say that I'm a part of it, and I thank you for the appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Steve, for bringing that up. As a veteran myself, I always look at November 11th as a special day to where we can all recognize our veterans from all branches of the service. Some people may not know that World War II, the fighting ended on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. That's where Armistice Day came from, the cessation of warfighting on the, I believe, Western Front in Europe. And it carries to, it carries through to this day as Veterans Day. So, whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County desires to recognize those who have served our great nation in times of war and peace. And whereas, National Veterans and Military Families Month is to recognize and thank those who serve and those who have served alongside them, their families and caregivers. And whereas, we send our gratitude to millions of service members, veterans, military families, caregivers, and survivors who have served and continue to serve our nation, to honor their sacrifice, their invaluable contributions, and share their pride in our armed forces. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of November 2021 be known as National Veterans and Military Families Month. Be it further proclaimed by this action, the Board of County Commissioners ask all citizens throughout our county to commemorate and honor veterans and military families where and how appropriate at ceremonies and activities this month, given under our hands and our seal this ninth day of November 2021, signed by all five Commissioners. Thank you.
By the way, I went to boot camp in Maryland.
Oh, good for you.
Cambridge. It's no longer there. Thank you all.
Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is awards. Lorraine Joyner from the ERC Committee. Oh, not Lorraine.
Lorraine is having some surgery, and so our thoughts are with her as she does that. I'm Wes LaPray, and for 10 years, I was saying, I'm Wes LaPray from Technology Services. Here today on behalf of the ERC, I'm no longer a part of Technology Services in person, but I am there in spirit because it's so much part of my life. But so, thank you for letting me retire with that, that piece. We're here today to talk about the Technology Services Team. It comes on behalf of the work that the county did, the Court Commissioners yourselves, and the County Administrator's Office in allowing county employees to work from home, to reduce the risk. And I was one of those people who was at the high-risk area, and so being able to work from home was especially meaningful for me. It kept me alive. So, thank you for that. But that didn't happen because I just got to go home and do stuff. It happened because we had the technology, technology and the infrastructure to allow it to happen, where I could work with email and I could work with my applications. All of that happens with the Technology Services Team. And while I have been privileged to work with many teams and announce their accomplishments throughout those 10 years, forgive me and allow me to glow about Technology Services. So, what I think I'd like to do is to, in addition to mentioning all the names of all the people, because they're, they may or may not be watching on streaming, because their, their business is helping people, and typically, they don't get a spare minute. So, we've allowed, we've arranged for the teams supervisors to be here. So, many thanks to Amy for arranging that. And what I'd like to do is to basically talk about for a second the different teams and what they do. So, in Technology Services Administration led by Karen Evans, who we'll bring up in a minute with her, with her plaque, that team deals with all the phones, all the technology that deals with communications, the cell phones, the iPads, all of that stuff, and probably something that not many of us deal with, but the public certainly does, is the switchboard is in Technology Services. The fitting out of this room, the cameras, the TVs, the person behind that wall making sure that it all goes out to the public, all that happened because of Technology Services. The Computer Services Team, most folks think that a help desk is a simple thing. Well, maybe they are in some places, but ours is not simply a help desk. We call it Computer Services because it covers a ton of things and people. And from the computers that we use on our desktops or laptops at home, and bigger screens that we took home and borrowed and brought, you know, and did our jobs, it allowed us to do all the things we would do in the office for the public and for our, for our Calvert County employee compatriots. And those folks, what we call image, put the stuff on the computers. They take care of the computers because we don't want to lose any. And so, there's somebody who takes care of the assets and all those. So, all of that is important in our, in our Computer Services. Well, when you have problems, who do you call? Computer Services, and they work with you on the phone or in person to solve that problem. The Enterprise Applications Team, that was the team I was on. If it's not Microsoft, it's this team. And it, the Public Safety System that people call in, the 911 system, the corrections, the law enforcement records, the land management, the finance system that pays us, the personnel, the HR system, parks and rec, you name it, there's 30 more that this team takes care of and updates and basically works with the end-users to teach them how to use pieces of it. The GIS Team, a lot of the public, in order to get things done at their house, have to produce maps and charts to bring to the planning and zoning folks to describe what the work is. Well, a lot of the time, the GIS folks are the ones who produce those things for the citizens. And there's a lot of other things, the election districts, you name it. If it's got to do with geospatial information, basically pictures from satellites or airplanes, this team is the one that puts it together, and there's a lot of data involved in that. And finally, the network team, the team that puts it all together. I mean, one person with one PC can work, but when one person needs to talk to somebody else, that has to be networked. And so, that team solves problems, creates networks, is the team really responsible for the technology in this room, and they put it all together. So, I am so proud to be a member of the ERC that recognizes all this work. Thank you, Amy, for putting this together as the department head. It is really, it's really up to the departments to recognize their folks, and she's done that. And we're the ones who get to bring people forward and congratulate them and give them to you as the Team Excellence Award for the Calvert County Government. And I'm going to... So, Karen Evans. Oh, Amy, sure.
I'm accepting for Karen Evans. She's unable to be here today. I'm Amy Lawson, the Director of Technology Services for Calvert County. And Wes, thank you. That was, that was very lovely, and that was very eloquent. He's absolutely right. Without the Technology Services Team, they did so much, and most of it was before my arrival. So, I'm so proud to present, to have them presented with this team award for the work that they did.
And they want you up front. Kathy Bauer, Computer Services, the massive force that you call and they answer the phone. Heath Starkweather, Applications Team, everything, everything the county does is on that, in their database. Lionel Civil, GIS guru, Robert Denton, many roles, network-related especially, and Kat Poff. All this stuff has to be secure or we lose data. Kat takes care of all that and her team.
Wes, we have two additional team members. We also have Andrew Miller, our Acting Asset Management Team, as well as John Silk Cox, our Network Supervisor.
This is a great team. It's been really fun to be part of it, and now I get to smile and glow. Thanks.
Congratulations to all of us. Thank you very much for your service. Who's doing it?
I'll do it.
I have it.
Is it?
Excuse me? So, the next item on the agenda is Employee of the Month. Mr. Haynes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Jay Haynes. I'm here today representing the Employee Recognition Committee. First of all, I'd like to take the time to thank you all, Commissioners, for all that you do to support the Employee Recognition Committee. The reason I'm here today is to present to you the ERC's Employee of the Month for October, and that selection is Master Correctional Deputy Stephen Hans. I'd like to read to you the nomination for this, for the Employee of the Month. Stephen Hans is currently at the rank of Master Correctional Deputy. He's a correctional officer at the Detention Center. He's currently assigned in administrative position as the Classification Officer at the Detention Center. Steve's the guy who interviews every individual who comes to the Detention Center, determines everything that the Detention Center would possibly need to know about this individual in order so that they can provide programs and services, and also to house this individual within the Detention Center. MCD Hans was recently selected as Classification Officer. This position requires a great deal of patience, knowledge, and attention to detail. MCD Hans has excelled in all these categories. He reports the work early each day ensuing to gather the most information on the inmates from the night before. As a previous book and administrative officer, he has a keen eye for the paperwork involved in our process. This has directly translated into the most productive classification meetings we have ever held at the Detention Center. MCD Hans maintains a great working relationship with the other staff due to his superb interpersonal communication skills. MCD Hans is a great example for new staff members and an excellent resource for our veteran staff. MCD Hans is a true team player and shows this in all of his work. He is dedicated to upholding the mission statement and values of the Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center. This nomination was submitted by Sergeant Joshua Underwood. At this time, I believe Sergeant Underwood would like to say a few words.
Good morning. I'd just like to say it's truly, it's a needle in a haystack to find somebody that's willing to put extra effort forward, no matter the task. Steve is the epitome of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So, Stephen, come on up. How do you pronounce your last name again? I'm not quite sure how to say it.
It's not well-known around here.
It's not, not well-known. Look, Stephen, Stephen comes from good stock. I can vouch for that. And he's not my son, not my first cousin, but we are family. All of us Hancs are family in Calvert County. And everything they said about you, I'm not surprised at all. You know, good young man, come from good stock, and we appreciate your service to Calvert County, all the citizens. So, I have a... So, I have a certificate for you for Employee of the Month, and I have a check which you can take your parents out to dinner with. Just dropping a little hint there, so, but congratulations. Thank you. So, you've got some family out there, you're all welcome to come on up. Just to make sure y'all heard that, he's a Hans.
Just real quick, I'm Major TD Reese, Administrator at the Detention Center, and I want to thank the Commissioners and the ERC for recognizing Steve. But I'll just say real quick, Steve's assignment prior to his assignment in classification was an assignment in booking administrative area, where he takes every inmate coming into jail, books them in. And the same thing, he, when Steve gets into an area, he has the ability to find a way to make it easier, improve it. He doesn't make it easier for himself so he has less work. He makes it easier on the entire building. The things he puts in, the processes and the policies, the changes he makes, makes communication clearer, and he does, he has great communication skills, ability to communicate with people, and it didn't take him long within classification to recognize, you know, this guy's got an ability that's going to carry him far in this career. So, I appreciate everything he does at the Detention Center. He's a great employee, he's a great guy, he's a good hockey fan, so... So, it's all good, but thank you all very much, appreciate it. And I can't add much more to that, but I remember recruiting Steve from Madison-Sinoco about 16 years ago. Johnny Madison's still giving me a hard time, but his loss is Calvert County's gain. Thanks, Steve.
Absolutely. Again, congratulations.
Yes, sir.
So, next item on the agenda is recognition, Mary Beth Cook.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. Today, I'm wearing a second hat as the President of the Board of Directors for Leadership Southern Maryland. And with me today is the Executive Director Denise Foster. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of the program by allowing county employees to attend and graduate from these programs. So, today, we're recognizing graduates from 2021 from the executive program, which educates and inspires a diverse group of current leaders, creating opportunities and collaborations and partnerships, impacting the community needs of Calvert, Charles, and St. Mary's Counties. Through thought-provoking nine-month educational program, the class participates in in-depth conversations, speaker presentations, and site visits covering a wide range of topics, including education, public safety, defense and industry, healthcare, housing and human services, engineering and environment, energy and environment, economic and workforce development, and multiculturalism and diversity. So, with, I'm going to present to you, the graduates actually graduated on July 22nd at our own Anne Marie Gardens, we had a very nice ceremony for them. And the first person I would like to recognize is Tamara Blake Wallace from my very own Planning and Zoning, she is a Principal Planner. Crystal Dowd, Deputy Director of Animal Services for the Department of Public Safety. Carrie Dahl, Director of the Department of Public Works. Stanley Harris, Communications Chief, Department of Public Safety. And he had something very important he had to attend to today, so he can't be with us. And finally, Jenny Plummer Welker, also from Planning and Zoning, she's our Long Range Planner. And I just want to say thank you very much, and please continue your support of our program.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So, next item on the agenda is an appointment, Deputy Administrator Rosallo.
Good morning, Commissioners, make sure this thing's on. One appointment today is for the Prince Frederick Architecture Review Committee. Staff is requesting that you adopt and pass a motion reappointing Henry Zhang and reappoint Richard Branch to the Prince Frederick Architecture Review Committee. Following these appointments today, you will have one vacancy left.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion in a second that we reappoint Henry Zhang and appoint Richard Branch to the Prince Frederick Architecture Review Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Imposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, old business, Director Shannon Nizal.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shannon Nizal, Director of Parks and Recreation. So, this old business item, Ward Farm Recreation and Nature Park Equipment Purchase Budget Adjustment. Background, the Department of Parks and Recreation is currently constructing Phase 1 of Ward Farm Recreation and Nature Park. This facility is scheduled to open to the public in the spring of 2022. In order to maintain operations of the facility and to ensure proper maintenance prior to opening, equipment is needed to properly open the facility while efficiently continuing to maintain other active park properties. Discussion, a budget adjustment of this amount should be accounted for in the fiscal year FY 2022 budget. The budget adjustment required a public hearing because it is in excess of $150,000. A public hearing was conducted on October 19th, 2021, and the record has been closed. Fiscal impact, if approved, amends the adopted budget for FY 2022 to appropriate and allocate $243,540 for maintenance equipment for the park by moving $35,000 from Account 317-31100 furniture and office equipment and $208,540 from Fund 5, Account 90206 Breezy Point Fund balance prior year to fund $45,250 to Account 317-31200 for automobiles and trucks and $198,290 to Account 317-31201 for off-road equipment. Conclusion, recommendation, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners adopt Budget Adjustment 031 and sign the related budget resolution. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Don't see any, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second that we approve and adopt Budget Adjustment 031 and sign the related resolution. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Imposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an update on the Police Accountability Board, Counselor.
Morning Commissioners, John Norris County Attorney. Few issues come up that have the ability to be as divisive as this one could be, but because we're in Calvert County, we've been able to reach out with the help of the Communications and Media Relations, Technology Services, and we were able to get quite a bit of input from the active groups in the community that really want to see this not be divisive, but actually help impact positively the quality of life in Calvert County. So, I want to thank everybody for their participation in that. The purpose of this meeting is to present the findings from the public survey and the comment period that closed on October 17th on the first draft of the Calvert County Police Accountability Board and the Administrative Charging Committee Resolution. For the Accountability Board, Board of County Commissioners is charged by Chapter 59 with, one, establishing the membership of the budget and staff for the Police Accountability Board; two, appointing a chair with relevant experience; three, establishing procedures for record-keeping by the Accountability Board. And the Accountability Board's charge, among other things, is to accept complaints of misconduct, forward those on to the charging committee, and to report annually on what should be done to improve matters of policing. Each county is also required by that Chapter 59 to have an administrative charging committee to serve countywide law enforcement agencies and local law enforcement agencies in the county. The county Commissioners are to appoint only two of those five members, with the Accountability Board Chair serving on the charging committee and the Accountability Board appointing two more citizen members. Principal function of the charging committee is to consider evidence to determine if it's appropriate to administratively charge the police officer who is subject of the investigation. If determination is made, the charges should be filed. They make a recommendation for penalty consistent with the disciplinary matrix that's approved by the state. So, public input was received regarding the size of the Accountability Board, racial diversity of the appointees, whether prior convictions should be the basis for excluding applicants, should there be minimum qualifications for the applicants, how long people should serve, and whether or not those terms should be staggered. Similar information was solicited regarding the Administrative Charging Committee. Finally, we asked what else should be considered in the next draft. Response highlights what was already obvious. This topic stirs passion within its advocates, and when asked how the Accountability Board and the charging committee should be constituted, but the results were not consistent. For instance, over half the responses suggested the Accountability Board should be larger than seven members, and three times as many said there should be minimum qualifications. We had to look a lot deeper, and we did have some help with interested community organizations in looking deeper into what the results meant. Most of the responses to the survey indicated that there should be a high school graduation or GED requirement. We looked at whether it should be more members or fewer than seven. Of course, the draft says nine today. More than seven took 60% of the responses from the survey. The minimum qualifications or experience in the survey, law enforcement experience, but obviously, they couldn't be active-duty law enforcement to be on the Accountability Board, but law enforcement experience came up with 86 responses. Military background came in with nine. No criminal offenses came in with 25. We found that there was a great deal of concern, though, when talking with other groups and reading through the comments that came in separate from the survey, that the Accountability Board should be a resource for the public where the average citizen would not feel necessarily impeded to approaching the Accountability Board and filing a criminal, or at least a civil investigation. So, there was some thought that perhaps law enforcement experience might intimidate the average citizen in encouraging them not to come. With respect to a five-year term that was in the draft, the Accountability Board recommendation came back in the survey is 89% recommended a shorter term. Staggered terms was supported by almost 70% of the responses to the survey. Exclude on the basis of background check did receive an 87% response. But looking deeper into that and some of the conversations with the respondents that I had personally, said that they were concerned that somebody who had to have an ax to grind could be appointed to the Accountability Board. Of course, ethics would preclude them from discussing their own matters with the Accountability Board, so they would be excluded from making recommendations based on their personal experience. So, I'm not sure that background checks are necessarily needed to exclude persons, but I might ask that the Board consider whether or not background checks inform the appointment process so that the Board at least has a case-search idea of what this individual's background is, what they're bringing to the Accountability Board. Five-year term for the Administrative Charging Committee was recommended to be shorter by 89% of the respondents, and exclusion on the basis of background check was supported by 86% of the respondents for the charging committee, again, presumably for the same reasons. So, the fiscal impact of this, we've talked about the Accountability Board having at least a quarterly meeting and needing to look at what is going on with law enforcement, make recommendations for how it could improve, and also looking at the charges that come in, the administrative charges that come in, and decide what they should forward, well, they forwarded on to the charging committee. And then the charging committee holds a hearing on those charges. They can accept new evidence, they can look at body cam footage, and they have to maintain confidentiality of those documents. But my recommendation is that the budget be set annually by the Board of County Commissioners for those independent committees, so as you see the need growing. So, we're looking for some direction from the Board in how we formulate the next draft. We did have Commissioner Hutchins in to meet with some of the community organizations, and they had a very good discussion, but obviously, that's going to be this Board of County Commissioners decide what we take to public hearing, or if you direct that we take to the next public meeting. Questions?
I want to actually tell you, Commissioner Hans, that, and commend you for having the initial meeting. We have two members in the gallery that were attending it. We have Malcolm Fun, who was in attendance at a meeting we held prior to our first public hearing, and Catherine Grasso as well. I just wanted to thank both of you for coming to that meeting. And I think from my perspective today, I mean, this is a fluid, workable document and board we're going to be working on. But I just want to convey my 20%, some of the things that I heard during that meeting, you know, replication of various boards that we have, and keep it simple. I think that, you know, and I'm not concrete in anything, but the formation of the Board itself, geographically, if we had two from the first district, two from the second district, two from the third district, two at large replicating our Board, I think that could be a basis. I'd love to hear your thoughts, but I think first and foremost is the formation of the Board itself. So, I just throw that out for discussion with my fellow Board members.
Well, I like an odd number. I do like that approach, though, Commissioner Williams, but I do like an odd number, and not that you foresee a lot of ties, but just to... But I think the main thing about this Board, and obviously, I've said it from the beginning, it's got to be community buy-in, but integrity has to be everything. Integrity has got to be the number-one thing, because let's face it, what's this Board being asked to do? You know, it's being charged with the integrity of the incident. So, I think, you know, as it's some people were a little hesitant. I think everybody should obviously feel that their input is welcome and that no one should be excluded, but I think integrity has to be at the forefront. And I'm like Commissioner Williams, I'm not really concrete on a lot of things. This is all brand-new territory, so, you know, you always want to get it right from the beginning, but I got a feeling that it will have to stay a little fluid for a while. It will have to be very flexible. I don't want to put anything in initially that just etches it in stone.
So, just for the record, today's discussion is about formulating the next draft. So, we're not finalizing the program today. So we're not finalizing the program today. It's to formulate a, a, a new draft that we'll take back out through the public process to get more feedback, and Counsel has provided some points that have been raised in the comments that we've received so far, so he's just today looking for guidance to frame up this next draft. So, just don't want anybody, including us, to think that today is it. This is just, we're putting some more soft concrete in the ground, so that's what we're doing, I'm sorry, but.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, because I don't want that misconception either, that they walk, I go, they made the decision today, and it's far from that, but, but, you know, a lot of people have challenged the, the, the background check thing. Anybody ever wants to backtrack me? I have no issue with it at anything. I've heard, you know, elected officials are excluded. If, if that wants to be put into play, none of that has ever bothered me. Everybody knows I'm a pretty open book, and I think that's where I go back to the integrity piece. You're talking about people's livelihoods, and you're talking about a profession that is based on integrity. I mean, that is a lot of responsibility. We just had, you know, law enforcement in here. It's a lot of responsibility thrust upon, and, and it's an ever-changing industry. So, if that's the road we're going down, then I just want to make sure, like you said, it's in, it's in, I forgot the word you used, John, but basically, you know, this, this isn't a, a negative thing. It should all be positive. Everything that should be brought to it should be in a positive light, to truly, you want the best law enforcement agency you can have, so.
Any other comments? So, Counsel's provided a list of items that he needs some guidance on, that we can run through. So he suggested that we set the number at nine, so if we use Commissioner Williams's suggestion and appoint a chair separately, that gives us nine. Agreed? If that sounds reasonable.
What do we do if you can't say fine two people from a district, then what would you do?
I, I think all of this is going to have to be, as far as practicable, an aspirational goal. You could leave vacancies on that board, but I don't believe that's going to be necessary, at least to start out, depending on what other criteria you're going to put in there, because there is a requirement that it have the diversity of the community represented as far as practical, practicable.
And I think we're good with staggered appointments?
Yep.
So we're good with that?
Staggered terms.
Yep.
So the next item on his list is, you know, law enforcement participation, because the first draft had, was heavily law enforcement-laden. We certainly got some feedback regarding that, but I think we also got feedback from community that they feel like there needs to be a perspective on the board that represents an officer's views. So, you know, we've, he's kicked around two or three former police officers. I think the discussion we had that night at the open foruming was that they had to be retired for at least five years to help reduce some of that connection. So his suggestion is that we leave it at two or three former police, but they have to be retired for at least five years.
Commissioner Hans, if I could offer the word retired, be considered versus away from, because the way it's worded, you would have to have been retired. That precludes anyone who's been in law enforcement for a period of time and then has been removed, quit, left, whatever, for over five years. Does that make sense?
Yes, in, in the context of military separation as well, it, the words have different meaning.
Right, right.
What's the reasoning that they have to be retired for five years?
They, the comments that we got that night was that they wanted some separation. They didn't want them to be retired today and be on the board. They just felt like there needed to be some distance, that they didn't, you know, to lessen that connection, and five was the number that was thrown around.
I'm just afraid that's going to limit the amount of prospects that we have, though.
True. I mean, all of these criteria could-
Anything you do, yes, is going to limit the pool. Yep.
But also presumptively retired would have been in good standing, as opposed to removed.
Sure.
And, and you can devil's advocate all day long, but the, the one positive thing I will say about the distance is, sometimes when you leave an industry, no matter what it is, and you come back to look at it, you can see where, you know, you know what, if I had, could do things over, I would do it this way or that way. Sometimes when you're in something real tight all the time, it's hard to sit back and get a perspective, so, I mean, that is one positive of having some separation.
But I think, I think three years would be enough, um, five is-
Well, I don't know what the magic number is, but, but, um-
I mean, if we hire people to do contracts, we require them to have three years' experience kind of thing, but I just think five is a long time.
Well, this is just a draft.
Yes.
Um, for John's purpose today, he could say three or five, and we could refine it later.
See what the feedback is.
Yeah, and the feedback will come back accordingly.
Yes, we'll do that.
So the next item on the list is the background checks. You know, that ninth meeting, there were a lot of people concerned. They didn't want citizens to be excluded because they had had some issue in their past. Some felt like it gave them a better perspective of how the interaction is between the community and law enforcement, that if they did have some type of issue in the past.
Well, John, don't we already have a policy in place that addresses that?
With Chapter eleven, we do have a felony conviction exclusion from boards and committees that we'll have to eventually consider whether this board is going to be exempt from that provision or not.
Why would we exempt one board from that? Like Mike said, integrity is the, the key word here to be on this board.
Moral turpitude is, is what we-
And it does state that it's to not exclude from consideration, so I'm fine with it being there.
So it would be a simple case-search review of person, name, birthdate, just so the appointing bodies know, and that'd be true for the Accountability Board when they're making their two appointments to the Charging Committee, that they would know who they're selecting to go-
And I think that's important, too, because the last thing you want to do is put a board together and go, I wish I would have known this and that, and I, I don't mean to offend anybody with that statement, but, you know, I mean, it's, you want as much public confidence as possible, so.
So we're okay with the background check as long as it doesn't exclude you from consideration?
Well, at least solicit comments on that.
Yes. I would, I, I don't know, I think there would, might be some, some concern if somebody had an active issue that popped up in the search as far as eligibility, but that'll get flushed out.
Yeah, something twenty years ago that was, you know, I mean, it's, it's, and that's back to the fluidity of, you know, so, you got a parking ticket in nineteen forty, you know, type thing.
I think this, it says in our policy felony, right?
Felony and-
It's not a misdemeanor.
Crimes of moral turpitude.
Yeah, it's a felony.
Serious misdemeanors.
Counselor, jury duty, Jennifer was speaking of it at staff, the staff meeting earlier. I thought I recalled someone making mention of that.
There was a specific comment that if you qualify for jury duty, you should be able to qualify for sitting on the Accountability Board.
So what's the standard for serving on a jury?
I truly don't, don't recall.
Worth looking into.
Because like Commissioner Makagi says, you know, our standards are you can't be convicted of a felony. Maybe we need to just look at examples of other institutions and what they're, where they draw the line, you know? That night, it was interesting, people in the meeting said we should look at other jurisdictions and see what they're doing. Well, this is, everybody's doing this for the first time. There's nobody else to look at, you know, so, at least today.
There are quite a few eyes on Calver County, as other jurisdictions are challenging whether or not the county commissioners make the appointments, or whether it's the sheriff makes the appointments, so.
Right.
But honestly, I think they're going to be, assuming there are no significant changes in Annapolis General Assembly session coming up, they're going to be behind the eight-ball trying to get an informed Accountability Board and a trained Charging Committee seated by July one, twenty-twenty-two, when this goes into effect. Time's not on their side.
But if we're going to put out a draft for feedback, there certainly is a constituency, 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 easy for me to say, out there that believes background checks are really important. So maybe we should include some considerations for exclusions, just to put out there. Like I said, if we use jury, you know, what we do for our own committees and boards, or if there are other examples, at least there's something out there for them to shoot at. I say that all the time, that's probably the wrong term to use, but throw darts at.
And our recommendation was not to make these exclusionary standards, but to make them informative provisions so that the body that's making the appointments has context.
Right.
Okay, we'll carry that forward.
So the next list was, as far as diversity, and I think we had kicked around using census data to kind of use that as a guidelines for gender and whatever other diversity needs to be on there. There was some discussion that night in the meeting that census data doesn't truly reflect the community that has the most interaction with police, and that instead of using census data, we should use data based on police interaction. Am I, I think I'm correct?
Yes, correct.
Statements were made. So, I don't know what you want to do with that, I'm just reminding you of the comments that were made, because the community felt like the census data was not representative enough.
Well, diversity is going to be extremely important, because you're going to want every perspective. You know, if you truly want to build, you know, the best that you can, I mean, look at the country. You know, when we're at our best, everybody's rowing the same way. So, and that, when I said originally, you need a full buy-in from the community, you know, I mean, so I think it's going to be important to have, from all walks of life, to be represented on that board, to have a way to have a voice, so, just.
So we're going to need some guidance on what that looks like.
Agreed.
Today.
There is a significant difference between the minority composition of the county versus the interaction and engagement with the law enforcement.
Right.
Well, also, too, you know, age, men and women, I think, you know, you know, someone that's a little older has a little different perspective than somebody a little younger. You've lived more life, and then somebody younger feels you're out of touch. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, it's, I never thought there'd be a day I wouldn't cool anymore, you know? I didn't know what people were talking about. I thought I'd always be cool. And one day I'm like, what does that word mean? And all the, you know what I mean? I mean, it's, it's, and there's back to with Commissioner Hans, people that are interacting with law enforcement, um, you know.
And of course, there were comments regarding mental capacity and their interaction with the law enforcement.
But we need that today, we need that makeup today.
He needs to know what we need to be writing in the next draft.
I'd like to hear what the community thinks as far, I mean, because part of that nine is going to get filled up quick, you know, and then it goes back to, you say, start limiting the pool, but, um-
One thing I've learned through this process, and, and let me introduce Nicole Harrington, our senior paralegal, I always say, well, how, we need to do this. She figures out how to do it, or, wouldn't it be nice if this guy was red today and she makes it red? But one of the things I've learned is that we don't get responses based on open-ended, or at least a significant number of responses based on open-ended questions. We really do need to give them something to throw darts at.
Well, I think you do need, and I know age is something that, very difficult to talk about, you have to be very careful, but I think you need a little perspect, a broad spectrum of age. I think it's important, be, you know, we're always saying we want our youth involved. Think you want our youth involved, but you don't, you don't want a dominating of anything. You want a nice, you know, where you can have every perspective there.
So what if we look at the data from the sheriff's office and sort of combine that with census data and see where we can come to some easy, some middle ground?
Okay.
Agreed.
Because right now, I don't even know what the total minority population is of Calver County. It's probably less than a third.
That was thirteen percent, if I remember the numbers, the draft numbers.
I thought that was for just one minority.
That was ten.
The total minority is all the, if you add in all the minorities together is what I was getting at, so, maybe we, we look at those two data points and try to find some middle ground. See what the, I don't know what the difference is, but we should look at that and help that guide us. Age is tough. Like, like John says, there's only nine positions, and, phew.
But I would love to see some youth buy-in and, you know, some more experience, to have that mix, and, and definitely, you know, with, with men and women.
And we're not creating roadblocks from the Accountability Board taking some of these steps upon themselves either, once they're formed, going out and asking the community, what should they look at for their next annual report, too?
John, I'm really putting you on the spot with this.
Okay.
And I apologize.
Is it worse than the jury question?
No, no. But, but I must ask, are there provisions in the law that set forth our choice of a chairman? So, could, the question to ask is, can we choose a chairman prior to the formation at any point? And if you don't have an answer, just look into that.
The law is very specific on the Accountability Board.
Okay.
That the commissioners do choose a chair with relevant experience. Creating the board then around the chair can become problematic, because what is relevant experience if you haven't identified what the task is of the, of the board?
So, yeah, well, what's, what's your thought for appointing a chair first?
Well, to assist, you know, in some of these, these questions, you know, that, that's my, I guess, objective in asking the question, because if we have someone in mind that could guide the formation and standing up of said board, I think it would be very helpful. That's all. And, and I know that's, you know, within the, our purview, we have to choose a chairman, so I guess the timing is the question. And, and you don't have to answer today, I guess, just please look into that.
Okay.
As, that's all.
I'd like to have him in place just for the stability piece. I think that's going to be the most difficult piece to put in there, because it's a big ask, and it's a lot of responsibility, so I don't want to be at the eleventh hour trying to find a chairperson, so.
So, the next item is terms, three or four years. Of course, they'll be staggered, and it's not on here, but term limits. People were concerned about an individual being on the board for a long time. They wanted to see more rotation.
Well, we should stay consistent with our other boards. What are our other boards? Three years?
So by Chapter eleven, it is three consecutive terms. Your number of terms, the number of years for a term varies by state law, local ordinance, there is no real standard for that. Three years is pretty typical, four is probably as common.
Especially if you're going to allow three terms, that's nine years.
Well, for, again, the sake of fluency, as we stand this board up, I would, I'd advocate for three.
I agree. Stay consistent, I think it's good, because it's also good, too. We, we've had a lot of problems getting people to fill positions on a lot of boards, so when you get somebody good, you want to keep them, you know?
And two, two additional terms.
And, yes, sorry, that is good.
Nope.
Yes, replicating our current practice, and, yes.
So, if somebody served on a board for three consecutive years and they sat out, they could come back, right?
Assuming they met whatever requirements there end up being in this resolution, yes.
So how long would you have to sit out for a term?
Not necessarily, but we could, we can include that.
Yeah, we might want to address that.
So they have to stay out for a full three-year term, as opposed to?
Yeah. That's kind of normal. Most, you sit out.
Well, let's, let's address that in another way, so we're, we're kind of in that position with, say, the Board of Ed, where somebody has applied to run, who did not sit out a whole term, but is not running at a district seat, they're running at a large seat, so, you know, there's all kinds of ways to look at it. What, what's a term, you know?
But for this, the term would be defined as a three-year period.
Yeah.
From when they lost their seat.
Okay.
Okay. So F., you're going to have to help me with a little bit, John.
Okay. F. was asking whether or not, so when you make appointments to the Planning Commission, you make appointments to the, or to the Veterans Committee, you may ask for the board itself to give you a recommendation of whether or not a term should be renewed, or whether this candidate should be considered for appointment. And so F. was asking whether or not you want to solicit input from different organizations or any organization before putting it on your agenda for an appointment to the committee.
And can I, may I, for clarification for us, this is the initial standing up and not moving, once it's established, eliminate, said?
It could be either.
Right. And that's why I bring, yes, the fluency of this, at least initially. From my perspect, my twenty percent of not having a basis for anything, it's, it's, it's a viable option, so. But I guess the only caveat is, where does it end?
Yeah.
That's, right, I mean, because.
And are you sending a signal that, not picking on the sheriff, but you're letting the sheriff decide who sits on the board?
Right, that's sure, yeah.
Which is an example, just an example that was used in this.
Sure.
I don't think people would be, take that very well.
I don't think so either. I think the public input on FOP or sheriff or anything like that, the public opinion would be the negative on that.
I mean, I think it's, at the end of the day, it's the five of us that are going to make the appointments, and we, we answer to the community and, you know.
Well, I think it puts a pressure on law enforcement, because I think it's, it's easier, it's better for us to make this. Ultimately, we're responsible for it, so it's, it's, it's better for us to do it and not to put that on law enforcement.
That was just one example.
Yeah.
But I think at the end of the day, the buck stops you.
I don't think that we should be considering, I, I'd have a tough time with F. in any way, considering other outside organizations trying to dictate the appointments.
Right. I would assume, and I'm just making an assumption, that those organizations are going to recruit individuals to apply that.
And that's fine.
They feel like represents, and that's what I'm saying, that's fine. I am concerned that if we set some guidance that certain individuals or certain organizations are going to, you know, play some role in weighting the appointments.
Now, this is a new format for me. For this body politic, moving forward, once it stood up, in other words, internally, that, and this is all fluid, I'm just stating, you know, past experiences. Internally, having a board basically check the box on a future member is helpful, for at least my twenty percent, on various other boards. Now, I'm just throwing that out for the sake of the record, if you will, so.
So I don't think we want to do F.
By consensus, I see, I see a no.
Yeah.
To F.
All right.
So the next item is requiring high school diploma or GED.
Seem to be a literacy concern more than anything else. Neither guarantees literacy, but.
I don't remember much comments about that one or the other.
It was more a survey response than anything else.
Okay.
So we're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Good. And there was a recommendation that we include a mental health provider as part of the board? Your nine disappears quickly.
That's what I was saying, the nine disappears.
And that is important.
And I think it's extremely important, but it may be difficult. But I think it's extremely important.
So we're good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And if, if you can't, if we can't find a person that would want to, a mental health provider that would want to sit on the board, could it be set up to where that person could be a consultant?
Ex officio.
A consultant or an ex officio or something like that to the board?
Is that allowed, John?
Yes, certainly. We're not putting any roadblocks up to the Accountability Board, getting input from wherever they feel they need input to make the best recommendation on how to change law enforcement for the end of the year.
Without going into it, the story we heard this morning, that could have gone so many different ways, and the impact to everybody involved, if it did not affect you mentally, there's something going on, because I mean, that, you know, so I, I think it's a key element.
So what I'm hearing is that if no one applies, that fits that category, we are suggesting that we appoint an ex officio in that field to advise the board.
Upon request.
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So the next item is a conflict of interest provision. That's pretty standard.
It is. The County Ethics Ordinance is still going to apply to the Accountability Board, so if somebody has an individual, personal issue that they want to try and raise through the Accountability Board, and they're on that board, they're going to be accusing themselves.
Because they're all going to be subject to ethics and.
Yes.
So I think that's pretty much automatic. So the next item is the comments turning this mandate into a bridge between public and law enforcement, you know?
Again, we cannot, we cannot create division within Calver County as we go forward and create this Accountability Board and Charging Committee. It needs to recognize that lives and livelihoods matter and are on the line here.
So the next item is the MOU with the sheriff and the police, State Police Barrett Commander, to meet annually to discuss the findings and recommendations of the board. So that we require that that happens at least annually.
In open session.
Public. So all these meetings are going to be public, right?
Not necessarily, especially with the Charging Committee. They will likely be closed session meetings.
Yeah, I get, I get the Charging Committee, but the Police Accountability Board, are they going to talk about issues that are subject to confidentiality?
With respect to complaints received, as they have three days to forward them onto the Charging Committee, there could be an opportunity there for some closed sessions. Likely, they will not debate the merits of the complaint until the Charging Committee has decided whether or not it has merit. So I wouldn't expect to see anything come up with names from the Charging Committee as they try to inform the Accountability Board and how things are working and what might need to be tweaked.
And shouldn't that include us, too? If you're going to lay out who the Board of Commissioners and the sheriff and the police barracks?
Well, that would be a three-party MOU, yes, or agreement.
Okay. So we good? For the two members the Board appoints to the Charging Committee, hasn't been a lot of feedback. Most of the discussion's been about the Accountability Board, so.
That's going to be an interesting one to appoint, just because of the level of confidentiality that'll need to be maintained and sophistication, like a juror. And maybe that's why we get back to the juror criteria in evaluating the facts and deciding whether or not the facts indicate there was a violation of a police code.
So it's got to be the chair of the Accountability Board. Doesn't it also have to have a retired judge?
That's for the trial board.
Oh, for trial.
So after the Accountability Board makes their recommendation to the sheriff and the Barrett Commander, the police officer can appeal that to a trial board.
So there's only three, three members of the Charging Committee, correct?
There are five.
Five.
The chair of the Accountability Board serves as a member of the Charging Committee. Commissioners make two appointments, and the Accountability Board makes two appointments.
With, internally?
They select from the public.
Okay.
So that's another application process.
Correct. So with nine members of the Accountability Board and two members of the Charging Committee, you're going to be looking for eleven applicants to stand up the first two groups.
And, and just so the public's aware, that is part of the overarching law, correct?
Yeah, chapter fifty-nine did a number of things, one of which was to eliminate the Law Enforcement Officer Bill of Rights that went into effect in the seventies, that gave a hearing right to a charged law enforcement officer. And among the things that it did with body cameras and public information requests in the Local Government Torque Claims Act, it put in this Police Accountability Board, Charging Committee, Trial Board structure as a manner for addressing complaints of police misconduct.
So we're going to try to follow the same diversity guidelines for the Charging Committee that we do in the Police Accountability Board?
It's recommended, but you only have control over two of the appointments.
Right. Right.
Wouldn't it? Never mind.
So that's the end of your list. Is there anything anybody else has on their minds?
When's the next, how much, when, when do you come back with, with this information, John? What's the goal?
The goal is to try and have the Accountability Board appointed by January so that they can start getting education.
Wow.
And training in real terms. It's not going to happen that fast. It's going to be February.
Right in the holiday times, and it's going to be tough, but, but I do believe we need to set a line, and so there's, put some urgency in it for folks. I mean, I would like to think, I would like to have the makeup of this done by the end of January, because, you know, we're going to blink, and it's going to be there, and so.
So it's the middle of November, so, you know, once we have another draft to go public with and advertise and have a comment period, like Commissioner Har says, you know, time's tick-tocking, and we all know that.
Yes.
So, but that is the plan. For anybody out there listening, you know, we have another draft. We just throw darts at and take comment again on that, try to narrow down the focus and work through and just, I mean, the comments we get back on the next draft is going to determine how long it's going to take, you know, if it's.
True.
If it's, if there's a lot of consensus, that certainly helps. If there's not, then we're just starting over again, but. And for the record, for everybody out there listening, every comment we've received to date is on the county website. You can go there, read them. We'll do the same thing next time, but we got nothing to hide, so. You have any, you have any guesstimate of when we might have a next draft?
I would like to have the next draft available for the public to review before Thanksgiving.
Excellent.
And I would like to have the next work session or town hall meeting with anybody who's still interested to come out. We might have to bribe them with food in early December.
Yeah, if we can get, you know, not too close to Christmas before people get involved.
Well, we were looking at the first week of December, having the delegates and senators in, but we understand they have been called to special session for the districts, so that gives us the first week of December not to have a night meeting with the delegates and senators and be able to focus on this.
Thanksgiving ain't that far away.
No.
And we've got to advertise, though. You got to have a pretty good idea of when you're going to have a draft, so we can start advertising to get that.
Yes. Well, we did advise everybody that gave their email address or telephone number when they came to the town hall that we will contact you using whatever contact information you gave us. We'll continue to build our list. We do ask anybody that knows people who are interested in it to pass it along. Of course, everything's available on the website. We'll be doing press releases, Facebook blasts, or is it Metaverse blast, whatever they're called now, to let people know.
But just like in the first step of this process, we encourage those individuals and organizations to reach out to their members, because, you know, we do the best we can, but we don't have all the opportunity that others have, so. You know, once this thing gets out, we just want everybody to spread the word as best they can. We want as much feedback as we can get. This is not about expediency, it's more about quality, so.
Is there anything I forgot?
Anything else?
Nicole's asking for some further direction on the former law enforcement officer membership on the Accountability Board, but I think we're going to take that out as an option and get some feedback on two versus three. And of course, that doesn't preclude the law enforcement officer from also being a minority. We can carry that forward from this draft in some form.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next item on the agenda is consent. We have several consent items today. Department of Planning and Zoning, recertification of Calver County's agricultural land preservation program. Item two, Department of Community Resources, FY 2022 Operating Grant Agreement. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB-2022-020 Tire Recycling Services. Item four, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB-2022-027 Emergency On-Call Sewage Pumping, Hauling and Disposing. Item five, Department of Parks and Recreation, Breezy Point Beach and Campground Electronic Gate Budget Adjustment. Item six, Department of Public Works Budget Adjustment Number 083 Highway Maintenance. Are there any comments regarding consent agenda?
Make a motion and adopt and approve all the?
We don't need a motion unless there's consensus, so hearing no opposition, the consent agenda will stand as presented. But thank you, Commissioner Gabby. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone in person on phone?
There is no one on the phone. If there's anybody in the audience who wants to provide public comment, please walk towards the mic. Thank you. The county commissioners have adopted rules to maintain the order and decor and keep them with the dignity of the government process. A copy is found here to my right. And the Ethics Commission has asked us to remind those that lobbyists include those who seek to influence local policy and are compensated for doing so, or provide gifts to local officials. Speakers of public comment are strongly encouraged to review the Calver County Ethics Ordinance and register in advance if required to do so. If you please provide your name and address, whether you're speaking as the designated representative of a group or as an individual.
Good morning, gentlemen, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Malcolm L. Thun, currently a resident of Solomon's, Maryland. Formerly resided in Chesapeake Beach, and prior to that, Prince Frederick, Maryland. I'm First Vice President of the Calver County Branch of NAACP. And I come this morning to speak about item six-two on today's agenda, the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021. I provided you copies of my statement. I think I have enough. Citing the ninety-day report published by the Department of Legislative Services of the Maryland General Assembly, I'd like to give a bit of background information regarding the subject act and why we're here today. The report states that due to growing concerns surrounding police misconduct on May the thirtieth, twenty twenty, Speaker of the House Adrian A. Jones and House Judiciary Committee Chairman Luke Krippenatur created an interim work group to address police reform and accountability in Maryland. The work group was charged with, one, reviewing policies and procedures relating to the investigation of police conduct. of police conduct, including the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights, LIBRO; two, determining the viability of uniform statewide use of police policies and arrest procedures; three, reviewing practices regarding the use of body cameras and disclosure of body camera footage; and four, identifying national best practices for independent prosecution of law enforcement-related crimes. The work group held eight meetings between June and October 2020 and received testimony from the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission, national experts on criminology and policing, public interest advocates, members of the public law enforcement representatives, the Office of the Public Defender and the state's attorneys. On December the first, 2020, the work group published a report with 12 multi-part recommendations. Many of the recommendations were incorporated into House Bill 678, Chapter 59. Numerous other pieces of legislation relating to police reform were also considered during the 2021 session. I'd like to speak to the police discipline and law enforcement programs and procedures. House Bill 67 takes effect July 1, 2020. As specified, it makes various changes that generally relate to law enforcement regarding altering requirements for police officers during traffic stops, establishing higher education, financial assistance programs for police officers, increasing civil liability limits applicable to police misconduct lawsuits and appealing LIBRO, and establishing provisions that relate to a statewide accountability and discipline process for police officers. Let us specifically address police accountability and discipline. LIBRO was enacted in 1974 to guarantee police officers specified procedural safeguards in any investigation that could lead to disciplinary action. It extends to police officers of specific state and local agencies, but it does not extend to any correctional officers in the state. LIBRO extends uniform protections to officers in two major components of the disciplinary process: the conduct of internal investigation of complaints that may lead to a recommendation of disciplinary action against a police officer; and two, procedures that must be followed once an investigation results in a recommendation that an officer be disciplined. The Act repeals LIBRO in its entirety and establishes new provisions relating to a disciplined process for police officers. Police Accountability Boards. The Act requires each county to have a police accountability board to hold quarterly meetings with heads of law enforcement agencies and otherwise work with law enforcement agencies and the enforcement agencies and otherwise work with law enforcement agencies and the county government to provide, to improve matters of policing. Two, appoint civilian members to charging committees and trial boards. Three, receive complaints of police misconduct filed by members of the public. Four, on a quarterly basis, review outcomes of disciplinary matters considered by charging committees. And five, by December the 31st of each year, submit a report to the governing body of the county, that would be you, gentlemen, Board of County Commissions, that identifies any trends in the disciplinary process of police officers in the county and makes recommendations on changes to policy that would improve police accountability in the county. The local governing body, the BOCC, must, one, establish the membership of a police accountability board, establish the budget and staff for a police accountability board, appoint a chair of the police accountability board who has relevant experience to the position, and, two, establish the procedures for record-keeping by a police accountability board. An active police officer may not be a member of a police accountability board. House Bill 670 also establishes requirements for the contents of a complaint of police misconduct filed with police accountability board in the process after the complaint is filed. The Act only requires that the chair have relevant experience to the position. This is not a requirement for other positions on the board. Since no police officers may be a member, how is relevant experience to be defined? Query: retired law enforcement officer? The function, responsibility, duty of the police accountability board does not involve making any judgment calls or any decisions as to the validity of the complaint. It is only to record the complaint, catalog it, maintain a record of such complaints, and forward it to the appropriate, and I have to disagree with the attorney, county attorney, he said that they forwarded to the charging committee. They forward that complaint to the appropriate law enforcement agency first, within three days after receipt of the complaint. The board is to review all complaints of misconduct received by them, determine if there is any pattern, confer, discuss with the heads of the law enforcement agencies quarterly of their findings, determinations. No judgment on right or wrong, just maintaining a record and passing the complaint to the appropriate law enforcement agency within three days of receiving the complaint. I would now like to address the Administrative Charging Committee. The Act requires each county have one administrative charging committee to serve countywide law enforcement agencies within the county. The Act establishes the composition and requirements for the committee and requires that before serving as a member of the Administrative Charging Committee, each individual must receive training on matters relating to police procedures from the Maryland Police Training and Standards Committee.
Mr. Funn, if you could wrap up your comments.
Okay. Well, you have my statement. And just to wrap up, I would like to say that we, as a society, must look to improve. As a society, we don't evolve, improve, change, we become stagnant. And from a personal note, let me relate how change has taken place in my life. I came to Calvert County in 1945 at six months of age. Jim Crow laws and segregation existed. I attended and graduated from a segregated high school in 1963. Left to attend and graduate from an HBCU and from their graduate school. As a youth growing up in the county, I was not permitted to go to Chesapeake Beach, North Beach, or Solomons after the sun went down because of sundown laws that were in effect during that time. These laws did not permit blacks to be in these jurisdictions when the sun went down. We were allowed to, there during the day, to work, but when the sun went down, well, that was another story. When my wife and I returned to the county in 98, we purchased a home in Chesapeake Beach, a place where, when I was a teenager, I was not allowed to reside. Presently, I reside in Solomons, another area where I was not allowed, able to reside until the 1960s. Change had to come for me to reside where I currently reside. To make a better community, change must come for better police citizens' relationships. We may say there is no problem, there is no issue. If that is so, why is society so fractionalized, so divisive, so uncivil towards each other, not willing to listen to each other, no respect for one another? Working together, we can be a change for the better. It is up to each of us to develop better relationships working together. And as Sam Cooke used to say, "A change is going to come." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. President, we have gotten a caller in on the phone. Last four digits, 5488. If you wish to provide comment, please press star six on your phone.
The caller has not raised their hand.
Unless there's anyone else in the audience? Yes, please.
Hi, Catherine Grouseau, Dunkirk, Maryland. I am still on the Calvert County Republican Central Committee, but no longer in a leadership position. So I'm speaking as an individual. When I first met with the individuals who are knocking around ideas, I thought to myself, this is going to really be an overwhelming task. How quickly will you all be able to accomplish it? Listening to the comments here today and how you all deciphered all of them and came to certain conclusions today, I think the comments were very valuable. I think they were very well thought out. I think they showed that the community is engaged. And I wish you all well as you take on this endeavor, but I think we're headed in a very good direction. Thank you all.
I live in North Beach, and today I'm speaking as an individual. Intimidation, humiliation, domination, bullying, and yes, racism. These are ugly words that reflect attitudes and behaviors that make police accountability boards necessary. They're not personal, private personnel issues. They're matters of public safety that we all need to be concerned about. Do they describe the majority of Calvert law enforcement personnel? Of course not. But good, responsible officers don't need this kind of behavior in their midst, giving them a bad name. Good, responsible officers also need not fear the fair-minded civilians who would be chosen to serve on a police accountability board. For those who argue that existing in-house discipline is sufficient, we only need to hear stories from our neighbors of color. We need only remember the vast numbers of people who took to the streets across the country to demand change and accountability in their police. Unfortunately, the good folks of Calvert County are often unaware of police misconduct because it has always been kept under wraps. They don't understand the need for civilian involvement in cases of misconduct. They might take a different position, say, on a survey if they had that information. For those who say civilians can't understand the pressure and split-second decisions that police need to make, remember, George Floyd was not murdered in a split-second situation. It was a nine-minute decision by four officers. You'll soon be making crucial decisions about the makeup of the Calvert County Police Accountability Board. A heavy police presence on the board would signal you do not support the needs for change and accountability. It would also strike a blow against our Calvert citizens who worry every time their kids drive off or every time they're pulled over by a deputy. Worries you and I don't have. It doesn't have to be a public versus police matter. PAB members need police perspective, but that perspective can and should be provided by board members who are non-voting consultants from law enforcement backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
My name's J.C. Hooker. And, can you read my address?
If you're speaking as the...
Individual, no. I'm coming today, and I'm going to change the tone just a little bit because it's also important. We have, you know, right now, remapping and redistricting. I know that we're going to look at our own selves, but I went to a meeting last week, and Calvert is being lost in the mist. And I asked you as our representatives to go to the other representative and get our fair share. We're like the little kid on the block, and everybody is dithering up. St. Mary is stepping to the plate, Charles County is stepping to the plate, and they're all getting their place in line. We are going to be lost because, number one, we, I need to know where you stand on us, them divvying up the map. Don't let them put us in a place that we will not be noticed. We will not be able to get the bridge fixed. We need our fair share, and we need you to stand to our representatives and find out what are they doing to fight for us to make sure we get our fair share. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Thank you for your comments. So the next item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Gadway.
Charles, taking notes on other stuff. Just want to remind everybody that this coming, that the 11th is Veterans Day. I did attend Jefferson Patterson, American Indian, Native American Day this last weekend. It was very interesting to go down there. I didn't realize they had a permanent exhibit down at Jefferson Patterson. It was very interesting. I encourage people to go down and look at it. Did a couple of other veterans ceremonies over the weekend. I want to give a shout out to the Cub Scout Pack in 1806, I believe it is, up in Huntingtown. I sat down with them the other night, had a great question and answer period with them. Those little guys and gals, you know, had some great questions. And in closing, in my closing, I should say, we are at 503 subscribers on the YouTube channel of Calvert County Government. And I encourage, if you're watching and have yet to, please go down and smash that subscribe button and tickle the bell for notifications when new videos are uploaded. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
I don't know how I come after that, but...
He actually toned it down from his practicing.
I just want to express my deep respect and gratitude to all the veterans and their families. Families take on just as much as the veterans, they wear it, you know, missing their loved ones, and we are blessed that they are out there and we can be here. I remember my father saying one time, you know, my grandfather had gone to World War II, he had gone to Korea and Vietnam, and his wish was I would never see anything like that, you know? And I think that's the wishes that we have for our family members, that they stay safe and don't have to be away from their families. So just hope everybody keeps them in their thoughts on Veterans Day, and thank you.
Commissioner McGee?
Yeah, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Dinner, which was an extraordinary event honoring three great people in this county that we lost this past year. Former Commissioner Michael Moore, Senator Miller, and Gerald Donovan. It was a fantastic event. Somebody got up and spoke about each person, and the stories were amazing. I also went to ribbon cutting up in Dunkirk, a new body spa back there behind, I guess, where the old subway used to be. And also attended the Farm Bureau Dinner, which I never try to miss those. The food is always amazing, the oysters and everything, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Weems?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind the public that we're having a veterans ceremony 10:30 Thursday here at the courthouse out front. That's all I have.
Thank you. So I, too, attended the Chamber of Commerce Gala last Thursday night. It was a very nice event. Had been a long time since I've been to such a dress-up affair since COVID. So it was good to get out and see people. Friday night, I, too, attended the Calvert County Farm Bureau banquet, first oysters I've had this season, so it was especially good that night. Saturday night, I went to Ducks Unlimited, the oysters were not as good, but it's the breaks. So Sunday, we, Commissioner Weems and Commissioner Gadway and I, attended a veterans ceremony down at Solomons at the Watch, On Watch Memorial there at the end of Dow Road where the old submarine facility used to be, training facility was. It was a great event. Had the commander of the Pax River Naval Air Station there spoke that day, got a chance to meet him, so it was a good event. And Commissioner Weems has already said, you know, on Thursday, we are having a veterans ceremony here at the front of the courthouse at 10:30. And on Thursday afternoon at 2:00, we're going to break ground for the new Beach Elementary School in Chesapeake Beach. So any of you that are interested can come out and watch us shovel some dirt. And lastly, previously, a speaker commented about redistricting, and we have submitted letters and are working on towards a map that shows Calvert County that has its own senator district and its majority delegate district, trying to make sure that we do have good representation in Annapolis and try not to cut up our districts like it has been in the past. So we are working towards that goal of having single representation. So we'll see how that all works out. Other than that, I don't believe I have anything else. Commissioner Weems?
Yes, sir.
I believe you have a motion.
Yes. I would like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Second?
No.
Raymond, he's got to read.
I'm sorry.
He's got to read.
Sorry. And I'll have that up in just a second. Sorry.
If I may.
I'm not going to break out in song.
Oh, I can, I got it now. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Motion to enter executive session pursuant to general provisions, Articles, Sections A, 3-305B, 1I, to discuss...
A, 3-305B, 1I, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of an appointee, employee, or official over whom it has jurisdiction. Two, 3-305B, 1, two, to discuss a personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals over whom it has jurisdiction. And finally, 3-305B, four, to discuss acquisition of real property for a public purpose and related matters.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, then we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You all have a great day.
Thank you.